And who turns out to be our biggest ally is Devin Nunes.
Who is?
He's not even our congressman. But he's working for us.
Those Democrats, I mean, those Republicans are amazing.
They got the other half in the...
Well, there's some that are.
That's how I got that in, that's it.
But Devin's one of us, doesn't matter what his persuasion is.
Anybody's one of us these days.
No.
Yeah, I know, I'm kinda...
Hey, he saved Mineral King. That guy is always a friend of mine. The only one that got it out of all those guys.
Be ready to go in just a minute, just as soon as I get attached to the internet here. Keeps us in motion.
Paul's got a nice little tablet. That's an Apple, right?
Yeah, I really like it.
Oh, you don't bring your computer, now you use your iPad.
I really like this, it's better than...
It's more compact. My wife's got one.
Can't get to go this timely, we're gonna start anyway.
Mind if we do something in your settings?
Once again, I can't connect, but anyways, rather than hold up the meeting, good morning to everyone. Like to welcome you to our Planning Commission meeting of October 9th, 2013. And we'll start with a roll call, please.
Dong?
Here.
Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Hiliano? Norman?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Please stand and join me to salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, this is the public comment time. And members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented on this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the items come up for a Planning Commission consideration. So just remember, if it's on our agenda, I will make sure that you're heard, okay? So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. At all times, please use the microphone over there and state your name and address for the record. So is there anyone who would like to address the Planning Commission at this time for any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and we'll move on to the first item, which is approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make our comment on the minutes. A lot of times, we point out, we carefully read over the minutes to make sure they're correct, and a lot of times, we point out what's wrong. And today, I want to point out what's right. This is an excellent job of the minutes, it's one of the best I've seen in eight years on the commission. And also, if you look under Director's Report 8, there's a word there used, appraised. And at first glance, you'd think that Jake Raper was perhaps praising the planning department. But appraise, which means an official praise, was the correct word to use. And as a newspaper person, I was very impressed, and I want to thank you for a great job. And I make a motion to reapprove the minutes.
Have a second, please.
I second that.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Hiliano? Norman?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. We're having the parcel map hearings. Actions, all parcel maps, and this section on the general will be heard in one public hearing. In other words, we'll just hear your comments, and we won't do it item by item, although I know someone this year wants to comment on item A. And since no one has requested anything be pulled, staff will not give you any presentation. And in any case, there will be a separate vote on each item. So we'll start with item A, tentative parcel map PPM 13-022. Adrienne, I'm Max... Help me out here, Max?
Tamina.
Max Tamina. Mina Gonzalez. Mina? Yeah, okay. Category exemption for tentative parcel map to divide into seven parcels totaling 130 acres into two parcels. It's located on Avenue 76, Road 132, east of State Highway 99, approximately one and a half miles south of Pixley. And so, at this time, is there... I think we have a gentleman here that would like to comment on this item. So please come up to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Frank Hunter, and I live at 7963, Road 132, in Pixley. And my concern here, when this was right there on the corner of a northeast corner of Site 2, they rezoned a section in, I think it was in 92, to convert that into a Sanger family dwelling, a certain amount of land. And I was wondering, was there a buffer zone in there due to agriculture spraying in the event they spray, stuff like that?
I'm gonna have the staff...
And I might be at the wrong meeting, but since I was invited to this one about this particular...
I'm gonna have the staff answer your question if it's appropriate, so who wants to answer that? I don't understand the question.
Okay, why don't perhaps we ask the staff member, Ann Chapman, to pull up a map so that we can identify it?
Sure, thank you.
Hi.
It's always appropriate to come comment, we want to hear you, so, okay?
Oh, okay, I might be even at the wrong meeting, but since I was invited to this one, I figured this is a good chance to point out...
So Ann will answer your questions, okay?
All right, so here, I'm going to move to the zoning map. This actually, while we're up here, this is the property that the Gonzalases are going to merge into parcels. And this is the area that has been rezoned, some of it residential, we'll look at that next slide. So here is the zoning now, mostly AE-40 along here, and then we have some residential zoning here and here, and some ag zoning with very small parcels here. So we do have a fair amount of residential zoning here. The right to farm notice would apply, so that even though these are residential, they would need to respect the fact that the agricultural land does have certain issues with it. That doesn't mean that, I think, you were concerned about pesticide sprays?
Yes, right now, right on the corner, my little section is, on the map, is 30 to 30. And right now, they have livestock in there, and it's no house at all, because, you know, if the pesticides kill them, well, he wouldn't do that, let's say. But if, since he's dividing it up, I have, I might, he might be planning on selling it or something. And now, if you take the livestock side of there, then a person who buy it might be able to, since it's agriculture area, he come in there and put what he want to put in there. And you have a tendency to see what I'm talking about.
They could do agricultural uses. I checked with the ag commissioner's office, which would be the office that would regulate pesticides.
Right.
And the farmers are not allowed to have drift, and it doesn't mean that it never happens, but their office would work with you and with the farmer if there was a concern. They would be the ones that could help you with legitimate concern about practices that are unsafe, that could affect...
Yeah, right there in that little section where air current is very, sometime it blow this way, that way, and even the goats and stuff walking out there on a real dry, hot day, the whole place just get blanket in dust, you know? And so, if they were doing pesticide there, that would be, you know, one of my concerns.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what we could do is give the ag commissioner the information that was provided today, and communicate the concern of this gentleman, so that the ag commissioner's office is aware of it. So Ann, if there is an issue, they will be at least aware of it, and they can handle it as part of their regulatory process.
Okay, and then if you want to know how to get ahold of the ag commissioner, just ask Ann Chapman, and she'll help you out, okay?
Oh, okay.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, thanks a lot.
Any further comments on this item? If not...
No, this is just, this is an allowed division here, it looks like, in the zoning. So I would make a motion that we approve the tentative parcel map PPM 13-022.
I would second that.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Hiliano? Norman?
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, is a tentative parcel map, PPM 13-023. Ag farming group, James Whitten and Associates. And this is to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the SEQA, and pertaining to new construction and conversions of small structures. It's on Avenue 144 and Road 208, west of City of Porterville. And do we have a motion to approve this?
Yeah, it's the same thing, I'll make the same motion as to approve the categorical exemption, the SEQA, and to conditionally approve the tentative parcel map, PPM 13-023.
I second that.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Hiliano? Norman?
Yes.
Number C is a tentative parcel map, PPM 13-026. Don Dowling. This is, site is located on the west side of State Highway 65, north of Linda Vista Avenue, which is also Avenue 174, in Porterville. And it's once again a categorical exemption, it'd be consistent with SEQA. And so, do we have a motion to approve this tentative parcel map?
I'd move for approval.
You have a second, please?
I second it.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Hiliano? Norman?
Yes.
We're moving so fast, I'm almost out of breath, so... Do we have any oxygen? Item 5, we're heading into public hearings, this is a zone change. PZ 11-001. Charles and Tina Thomas, Forester Weber and Associates is their representative. This is, you know, I'm curious about this, because we've, this is the second Kennedy Meadows, and maybe you'll explain that as we go along, because this is, I don't think, has anything to do with the last one. But the site is located on the north side of Gorman Road, approximately 400 feet west of Kennedy Meadows, in Kennedy Meadows. This is that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and monitoring plan for zone change. It's consistent with SEQA. And second one, there's two motions here, to rerecommend the Board of Supervisors for zone change. And Charlotte is our staff person. Is this the same ongoing one we've had with that?
No, sir, the one where you're referring to was before your planning commission a few weeks ago, and I think it's coming back to your commission in the next meeting. And that was a tentative map to create, I think, 17 commercial lots, which is just located south of this site that we're talking about.
But there were some zoning issues, because there was some commercial land uses at that location also?
I don't recall.
Okay, well, neither do I, but okay, continue.
Hey, good morning, Chairman Whitlatch, Commissioners, Charlotte Breswylis, RMA, Planning Branch. The proposal is a change of zone application submitted by Charles and Tina Thomas. The project description consists of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan, as well as a change of zone on a 20.36 acre parcel from MR 217 to CO commercial. The existing land use designation, which is mountain commercial opportunity, will remain the same. The subject property is located on the north side of Gorman Road, approximately 400 feet west of Kennedy Meadows Road, in Kennedy Meadows. Gorman Road is designated as a secondary public road and serves as a collector for the primary roads in the area, in this case, Kennedy Meadows Road. The site consists of four five acre parcels. The existing zoning designation is MR 217, mountain residential, 217,000 square foot minimum. Properties to the north and east are also zoned M 217. Property to the south is zoned CO, commercial opportunity, or commercial recreation. And the property to the west is zoned A1 agriculture. This is an aerial of the subject site and the extended area. There is a mix of mountain residential areas, as well as commercial recreation uses. And Kennedy Meadows Road is directly to the east of the subject site. The proposed zoning designation, CO, complies with the Kennedy Meadows land use designation, mountain commercial opportunity area. There are four main criteria levels outlined in the Kennedy Meadows Plan that are guidelines for implementation of the commercial development. And they are, property, number one, that property has access to the public maintained road, adequate to serve the development. In this case, it's Gorman Avenue, all the lots have access to Gorman. Number two is that the property can be developed without conflicts of use in the area. The site is identified for commercial type uses. Number three is that the property will fulfill a need for a demonstrated demand for additional commercial designated land. While this criteria is somewhat ambiguous, the proposed use is for commercial storage or other low-key commercial type development. According to the applicant, they would like to develop to the needs of the community. Commercial, amount of commercial designations require site plan review process, meaning that prior to building permit issuance, proposals will have to go through the project review committee, as well as the planning commission process. And number four, that water can be made available for domestic and firefighting purposes. Individual wells are proposed for this site. Prior to permit approval, it must be demonstrated that sufficient water quality and quantity is available to meet the requirement. In other words, new wells will be drilled, and the wells will be tested based on soil composition and water supply to determine whether there's enough water for development on each one of those parcels. There is a fire station located to the south of the subject site, on south side of Gorman Avenue. It's manned by the Bureau of Land Management Volunteers. The proposal is consistent with the county's newly adopted general plan update, 2030. There was a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan prepared for this project. There were five areas of possible potential environmental effects that were mitigated through conditions of approval. And they had to do with air, cultural resources, hydrology, noise, utilities, and service systems. These five mitigation measures that have been included reduce any potential environmental effects to what staff has determined to be less than significant. And that concludes staff summary of the report. We are recommending that you hold the public hearing, that you recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the mitigated negative declaration mitigation monitoring plan, and that you recommend that the board also approve zone change number PZ 11-001.
When does the parcel map come back to us after they've done their soils and water?
Well, any, any commercial development on any one of these parcels, it's already divided into five acre parcels, five acre lots. So any development proposed for those lots will have to come before you again for review and approval.
Thank you. Thank you, this is a public hearing, any, anyone who would like to come forward and make a testimony for or against this project, you're invited to come up this time. Are you against it, or for it?
I'm gonna be for this one.
Okay, thank you.
Fred Weber, Forester Weber and Associates, 1620 West Mineral King. I haven't seen the mitigation. I got no staff report, nothing from staff.
Oh, I apologize.
I don't know what they are.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'll give you mine.
So if I could have a copy of them and then come back towards the end, so I can read them?
Sure, sure. Someone to give this to?
Do you have a copy?
Oh, you got one, okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to the next item, and we'll come back to this one, okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 5B. And I have to pass the gavel and recuse myself from this? Not cruise, recuse. So you're in charge, Ed. Oh, you gotta have the gavel. Okay. Excuse my voice here, I've been battling my allergies. So this is the continued public hearing 6A, special use permit 13-019, The Grape Guys, met with Matthew Graham. It's a categorical exemption and special use to allow an agricultural service, sales and marketing of fresh fruit on a one acre parcel on an AE-20 exclusive ag zone. Site is located on the west side of Shirk Road, approximately 1,883 feet north of State Route 198, west of Isilia. Continued from July 24th, and I believe Charlotte is our contact. Charlotte, you have the floor.
Very much. This item was first heard by your commission on July 24th. And Sean Ricks, President of Grape Guys, discusses concerns regarding two conditions of approval. Number 17, requiring paving and driveway, of the driveway and parking areas as requested by the City of Isilia. And number 19, which required the new septic systems be engineered designed as requested by the Environmental Health Division. Your commission continued the item to August 28th in order to allow time for discussion and negotiation between the applicant and the county and city staff in regard to these conditions of approval. Staff conducted a subsequent meeting with Mr. Ricks, at which the issues regarding the two conditions were discussed. Since the onsite sewage disposal system is adequate to serve the needs of the office, no new sewage disposal systems are required at this time. Therefore, the concern regarding the engineered septic system was no longer an issue and/or concern of the applicant. It will stay in place, it will be part of the resolution for approval in case there is new development in the future and a septic system is required. At that time, that system will be engineered designed and reviewed by the Health Department and the Planning Department. At the August 28th meeting, it was noted that the property owner was not opposed to condition number 7, which requires the paving of the parking lot and the driveway. However, Mr. Ricks was unaware of the fact. Apparently, he had not communicated with the property owner. So he requested a continuance of this item again to today's date in order to, for him to get with the property owner and the city and work out the details. Also, at the August 28th meeting, Josh McDonald, City Planner for the City of Isilia, commented that there were, was a possibility that the city would be annexing the property at some point. Mr. McDonald requested a continuance also of the public meeting to allow sufficient time for discussions on that issue to take place. The, the meeting was continued to, the public hearing for this project was continued to today's meeting. Also, I want to note that on September 6th, the City of Isilia met to discuss a special, a subject, special use permit, and a follow-up phone call, conversation with Mr. McDonald from the city. He stated that condition number 17 should remain, and that has to do with the paving, which requires the paving. And that additionally, the City of Isilia requested that an additional condition be incorporated into the resolution for approval, which requires the property owner to provide an irrevocable offer of consent to annex at the time when the city determines it's appropriate. A following, a following condition of approval has been incorporated into the proposal. The property owner shall agree to annex the subject property to the City of Isilia when feasible to do so. Staff is recommending that... Staff is recommending that you adopt the categorical exemption for this project, and that you approve special use permit number PSP 13-019.
Pitch, Charlotte?
That's it, sir.
Thank you. Okay, this is a continued public hearing, and we've got a continued public testimony portion. Is there anybody that would like to come forward and make comments on this with the latest developments?
Yes, good morning, Planning Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. My name is Kent Koffus, I reside at 32265, Road 244, in Lemon Cove, California. And I'm the owner of the facility at 409 North Shirk. I have to apologize, I'm really ill-prepared, I've never received any communication or correspondence on this agenda item, until probably about a half hour ago, I received the memorandum, and yesterday, I was notified at the hearing. So I am ill-prepared, but I'd like to give you some background and let you know that this facility has been in use for over 25 years as a veterinary clinic in an AE-20 zone with an allowable use with a special use permit. It was operated off, for off-site treatment of large dairy animals, and was primarily as a office facility as it's being used now. For about two years, it sat vacant, and we tried repeatedly, we met with the county, we met with the city. I have a city agenda item here that, we met in 2011 for site plan review, because we were in limbo at what we could do to use the continued use of the facility. At that time, Daley Oak SPCA wanted to take possession, as well as child development facility. And when we met with site plan review, the city recommended that we, they would go along with whatever the county would go along with, and then the county said they would go along with whatever the city wanted. So we've kind of been in a quandary, I just want you to know that we've updated the facility, it's a very clean facility. There has been resurfacing done on the parking lot, the building's repainted, it's... We're not asking for any type of a new use, so we don't think that there should be a lot of monetary constraints onto the type of development, especially at the zero hour that the city has stepped forward and recommended annexation. It's going to be continued as an agricultural use in an agricultural area, and we just recommend that you keep this in the county, and that we would comply with non-restrictive improvements to the area. And like I say, I apologize, I'm really ill-prepared, I had no correspondence, not any notices in the mail or anything regarding this. Hopefully, I've made some of my points, thank you. Thank you.
Sir, I've got a question or two. Now, you've, I kind of, I live about a quarter mile north of you there on Shirk Road there, but I go by there every day, and I noticed that there's been some all-weather material put out there that basically looks like ground, ground asphalt that's been put on that deal. I believe the city's asking for concrete.
Paving.
Paving, or paving would be asphalt paving, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, the type of material he's got on there now, does, does that suffice? Or does that gotta come, have to come out of there and you gotta go in with a liquid pour, asphalt pour?
I believe it would suffice for the county, but the city has more strict guidelines.
Yeah, that was only installed about nine months ago. And also, to address the septic system, there was an engineered and improved septic system put in about five years ago by the veterinary clinic to accommodate larger volumes of water for their facility washing that took place there. So, there's been a very new upgraded septic system that's just been put in, and to have to repave that parking lot and have to deal with all of the dry well holes that are available to be pumped, that, it would just be an astronomical cost, and we would never have done the repaving that we've done if we knew that these last hour restrictions were going to come forward from the city.
So, what you're telling us is that, that you, you're in objection to the, the city's requirement for paving on that?
Yes, I'd like to see it meet and comply with county standards because it is in an agricultural area.
Okay. And, but Charlotte, the septic system, that, that issue's been taken care of?
That issue's been resolved, yes.
Okay.
So, we're looking at, I'm sorry to interrupt, so we're looking at condition 17?
17 and 19. The property owner shall agree to annex the subject property to the City of Isalia when feasible to do so.
And this is the old Mill Creek Vet Service Building, right?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Sir, you're the owner of the property?
Yes, I am.
Have you been in communication with your agent, who has been appearing before this commission and also negotiating on your behalf?
Yes, I've been out of town for about three months ago, and about a month ago, I got a call that, on a Friday afternoon, about four o'clock from the City of Isalia, saying that this would be on an agenda, their agenda on Monday morning. So, my agent contacted me and said he would represent me at that meeting because I couldn't return from Washington at that show to notice. But I have not received any, any correspondence whatsoever from planning staff or, or any, anything to date of what's been taking place.
Has your agent been sharing that information with you?
He has shared a limited amount of the information with me, yes.
Is your agent here today?
Yes, he is.
Maybe he could address this so that we can clarify the level of communication.
Well, I, actually, he acts only in the capacity as property management for me, just on, for the facility maintenance. I think it was probably my due diligence to, I know I was listed as the owner, as well as the people who had applied for the special use permit, which were the people occupying the building, so.
Well, do you want to continue into this matter, to consider it further? Because the way it stands right now, the condition regarding the paving of the parking lot is acceptable to staff.
To what degree? I mean, it doesn't spell out, is that the entire surface area? Is it to accommodate only the amount of employees that are at the facility? I mean, is there, I haven't seen anything that's, that says to what degree. We certainly would be willing to take on some limited improvements, although, like I said, we have just recently totally resurfaced.
What you're asking is, you'd like a further degree of specificity with regard to what your obligation will be regarding the improvement of the parking lot, correct?
That's correct, and, and as well as the annexation request.
Then I think would be appropriate that you be at the table with the city when we have another meeting, so that you can hear very explicitly just exactly what they have in mind, and if you're in agreement with that, we could specify that further in the resolution.
Well, I would certainly like to have some communication with the city. We've tried to establish that in the past and had several meetings with them, and this has never come up before, including at site plan review.
Very good. Even though this is still a continued public hearing, and we would like to hear from the agent, probably we're in the direction of, of another continuance to ensure that everyone's on the same page.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, come up, sir. Name and address, please.
My name is Sean Ricks, 409 North Shirk, which is the office facility. Kind of much ado about nothing, really, I, all due respect. I was at the city council meeting. They actually, the city planner came in with a, with an idea that they wanted to annex this one acre, which just sounds super efficient. But, and I've learned a lot about what, how, what goes on with the city and stuff. Anyway, I did meet with the city. I think that the surface that's there now is just fine. We are in the county. It's an AG three-inch, AG base, it's, it's, there's no dust. It's perfectly graded, it's all redone. I mean, I think, I think it's just fine, and, and I, and I didn't like the idea, even though it would not be at my expense. I have not met the landlord, by the way, I just saw him for the first time right now. But, I, I think that it's unnecessary and a burdensome requirement, but the city was pretty adamant, when I met with them, that they wanted some kind of paving. So, I said exactly, I asked exactly that. What, what's the, what's the minimum? Because that's really all that should be done. It's a big, it's a big piece of property, and it would be very expensive to pave it. So, they, we were trying to identify, okay, how many, how many spaces would be required? It's based on a square footage of the, of the office. There would be an ADA space required with a, with a ramp area. You know, it's, 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 it's probably fine the way it is. The city says they want more. I think Mr. Koffus should definitely be involved in, in some discussions with the city as to what, what they're willing to live with, but as far as I'm concerned, it's a property in the, in the county that's got adequate roads, parking surface, so.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, sir?
Is there anyone further who would like to speak on this?
Is there? Anyone want to step forward? Seeing none, then.
In, in a lot of this, we want to ensure the due process is accorded to everyone. And since the property owner has expressed that he would like to be more involved, and number two, would like specificity concerning exactly what his obligations would, I would recommend a 30-day continuance, and I would request that the property owner, the agent, as well as our staff and city staff, sit down to specify exactly what their requirements would be. Please note, these are requirements in the future. They're not required at this time. If the development occurs in the county right now, it would be per the county standard. The city standards would kick in, if you will, only upon annexation. And annexation is some future time when feasible to do so. So, there's an ambiguity as to whether, in fact, someday it will annex, but there appears to be still objection today, at least expressly or impliedly by the agent and the property owner, that they don't want to conform to city standard. Staff is comfortable with that because, as you know, the new general plan update, memorandum of understanding, requires a higher degree of discussion and cooperation with the city, especially when property is located within the urban development boundary. Therefore, even though we feel there would be enough information to go forward today, prudence suggests, maybe we have a 30-day continuance to allow the property owner in particular to participate, so he knows exactly what he's getting into if this resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spotta. I don't know about the rest of the commission here, but, you know, I've heard this thing long enough. And if the city's not going to annex it, in my opinion, then we strike condition 17 and leave it as is and move forward and get on to other business, but.
It's within your discretion to do that, but staff to staff, we have an agreement with regard to that, that condition specifically?
You know, and I understand there's a memorandum of understanding, but that doesn't mean that, that it's the, the city's way or the highway on this understanding either. I mean, if they're not going to come up and annex it, and we give them ever, certainly a continuance to look into that issue, and it looks like they've declined, then, then they don't have, they shouldn't have as much of a say. There's some conditions here. There's, that's an incredible expense to put in on, on the businessman here, and for something that's going to happen in the future, maybe.
I would agree with Mr. Diaz. We ought to strike number 19 and make a motion.
I think, I'm going to make a comment, too. I think we do need to respect the future understanding of the general plan. And I really, I mean, if it comes back after this 30 days, that we can put a condition in there that says, "We don't have to do that unless, unless an annexation occurs," I think, that seems more prudent to me than to just strike it altogether. So, I would be inclined to go with the continuance.
Yes, yes.
I'm a little confused, because I think Mr., what Mr. Spotta said was that that condition only kicks in if it is annexed.
Let me clarify. In, in, in turning to the precise language of condition number 17, I believe, it's on page four of your resolution, if you can turn to that. Paragraph 17 says, and I'll just read it for the record, "Prior to recordation of the special use permit 13-019, the applicant shall improve the parking areas and driveways with asphalt concrete and an aggregate base consistent with City of Isalia standards." So, to clarify, that condition would kick in before recordation of the use permit now. Now, there's more to it than meets the eye. I appreciate the concern of the commission with regard to, let's say, elevating the standards of improvement from county to city. However, through the discussions, there were a lot more improvements that the city preferred. They were not required. In other words, a lot more offsites, that's not in here. But what you may, from your perspective, see as being an unreasonable condition, there was a lot more that is not in here, as a result of discussion and negotiation. And that's the give and take, if you will, through the MOU process.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, my question would be, I, I also drive past this site all the time. It's a, a very large area, and if we're going to continue this, I would like specifically from the City of Isalia to tell us how much asphalt has to be there. Because what they did is they covered with all-weather material, the entire area, it looks very nice. But, maybe that doesn't have to be all asphalt, because it's a, it's a huge lot, it's a very large piece of property. Maybe it could be less for the parking, because right now, it's a very large piece.
That's a good point. What I would suggest, and what I would suggest that we do is that we, we prepare a site plan and delineate what area and the degree of the improvement on the site plan and have the notes on it, so that there is absolutely clear understanding as to what is required and when.
The other thing, Mr. Spott, is that, the way it is now, that, that asphalt is a permeable surface on that thing, and so rainfall and whatnot will percolate through there. If you make that solid, either asphalt or concrete, we don't know where, where the runoff's going to go. There are no curbs and gutters out there. And so, it could go to the south and go into the, the Grange property, and, and if it goes out into the street, it's going to be, it's going to be a hazard to the, to traffic.
Good point.
So, I mean, I can appreciate where the city's coming from, but in this, in this case, anyway.
So, it isn't approved permeable surface that's on there now?
Well, it's not approved to the ci, it's county standards. It's, it's, you know how they grind up the asphalt when they, when they redo roads? And they put that in there and they pack that on down there, but that's a, that's a, that's a permeable surface, because that water will, will go through that. Is that right, Greg? Am I, am I?
Semi-permeable.
Semi-permeable, right. And so, if, if it's not permeable at all, then we've got to discuss where this runoff's going to go, because as Nancy said, that's a lot of area. And if we get, you know, an inch and a half or two inches of rain there, there's going to be some water to deal with, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just make, and commissioners, let me make a general comment. As a result of the adoption of the general plan update last year, and the approval of the memorandum of our understanding with the cities, you're going to see more of this, more intervention and negotiation. That's not the way it was done in the past. Now, there is an obligation where we have to sit down with the city and, and really evaluate annexation issues and improvement issues. That's new. So, we have an obligation to go through this process and present this information to you, which may be new.
Understand. The, the county needs to know that the city's going to come in and ask for the moon and then settle for what they want. So, the, the city's got to, I mean, the county's got to sharpen its negotiating pencil here a little bit. Okay, I, yeah, yes, so, go ahead, Mr. Ricks.
Sorry, I was at that meeting, that council meeting.
Your name once again?
I'm sorry, Mr. Ricks, Sean Ricks. Chairman Diaz, I was at that meeting, and I love, I love the idea of striking that, that requirement and moving on, but the, the, the vote was taken based on the agreement that the city and the county would sit down and work this out, and, and I don't think that's been done. But I agree that we need to identify, what is the requirement? What do they need? Because the, the tenant doesn't need anything. We're, we're content with what it is. It's the city that somehow wants X number of paved spaces and ADA, and, and we're good with ADA, but we just think that the paved spaces are ridiculous and not required, not necessary. But, Mr. Spotta, you're right, the, the city and, the city is expecting to talk, talk to the county about this again before it gets done.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, yes, sir.
Kent Koffus, I apologize, I have another comment. There seems to be so much confusion regarding this, and these are things that we've tried to get clarified in the past. And if the city's stance is that upon annexation, these requirements would be, then wouldn't that automatically be kicked in under the city's requirements at that time of annexation? We're not talking about that issue now. We're talking about an existing use of an agricultural facility that is in the urban boundary. However, there has been no clarification with your staff to us of even if there was a widening of Shirk Road, which side of the highway you're even going to widen? How can we make an encroachment or paving or curbs and gutters when you don't even know where you're going to widen it? Can't this just be left as a county issue? And at the time that the city, if and so they desire that they want to annex this and have us put in fire hydrants and all of these very expensive propositions, then we would have to address it with the city at that time, not the county. Right now, I feel it's in the county's jurisdiction. They've done well with agricultural properties over the years. This is piecemeal. You're not going to take one acre that's surrounded by other AE 20 and annex it by itself in the city. It's got to be conclusive to all the other properties in that area. This is a much bigger issue, and I don't feel that that burden should fall on us. And also, I agree with this, and the permeable paving is really important in agricultural areas, that you don't have uncontrolled runoff that goes into city storm drains. So, I'd ask that the county please, please take a stand on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Anybody else have any comments on this issue? Okay, then, I'm not going to close it. Looks like I'm probably going to recommend a, a motion.
Just a quick comment, if I could, Mr. Chair. I've seen this three times, this is an ag use. You know, we're looking at the associated costs that are going to happen in the future with the general plan update review, but it is, and I'm all for playing well with others, don't get me wrong, but, you know, it's an ag use in the county at this time with some future consideration for the city, so.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you on that, but I think, in all prudence here, we need to probably entertain a motion for a continuance.
I'd like to also say, too, if we're going to think about this type of thing, I'm, I'm pretty much leaning in that direction, too, but if we, if we're going to talk about permeable, I think we need to really, maybe the county needs to take a look at that for this type of thing in ag areas. And I'm hearing semi-permeable and permeable, and I don't quite understand what, what we have out there. But I think what we need to have out there is permeable. So, that doesn't necessarily mean put the concrete over it or the asphalt, but I think we need to look into that. And when the county makes requirements in these kind of areas without a, a city annexation, then I think permeable's the way to go. So, let's think about that for the future. It's obviously, maybe, we're taking a step in that direction right now, so. Some, it's fruit for thought.
Any other comments? I'll take a motion.
I think there's a motion.
Oh, do we have a motion now?
There will be a second, right?
Could you restate the motion and the second, please? Whoever made it.
Did, who?
Did you make a motion, Wayne?
I think the chairman made a motion.
I didn't make, I just said I agreed with the chairman. Did I?
I think we need...
No, I didn't make, I don't recall making a motion.
Well, then, now's the time for a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm making a motion that we continue special use permit thirteen dash zero one nine until the city can be contacted and we can go back and to negotiations with them.
Is that a thirty-day date specific?
November thirteenth.
Could you amend your motion to November thirteenth?
To, I would amend this motion for the special use permit thirteen zero one nine to continue to November thirteenth, November thirteenth.
Birthday.
Oh, no. I'll make a second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call?
Long?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch? Oh, sorry. Filiano?
Yes.
Norman?
No.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's passed. Sorry, great guys, we're gonna have to come back again. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Whitlatch.
If I had that, I knew we would've done it in less than three minutes, so, but, anyway, moving along to item six C. This is a tentative parcel map, PPM thirteen dash zero two five, Herman and Virginia Cassidy, Forster, Weber...
Six B, Mr. Chairman.
What?
We gotta go back.
Setback, setback.
Oh, okay. Well, actually, let's go back to Forster and Weber. Fred, are you ready to come forward and comment on that item? Which was, you need a time to read the conditions.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, would you restate where we are on that then?
Yeah, I gotta find it here, so...
Five A on page three of your agenda.
Five A. PZ eleven dash zero zero one. We took a little break, so Mr. Weber could read the conditions, and we're the public comment. And we're Fred Weber, and your address is?
Sixteen twenty West Mineral King. The mitigating neg deck, the mitigation appears to be the special use permit and site plan review at the time of development, which is okay.
Okay. So, you're okay with it?
Yep, was that easy?
Thank you. This is a public hearing on five A. Is there anyone else like to come forward and comment on this item at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to staff's recommendation, which are to approve. There's two motions, right?
Yes, sir.
First motion would be recommended to board supervisors to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and monitoring plan for zone change. So, do I have?
I'll make, I'll move to make that motion.
Second, please.
I second that.
Roll call?
Long?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch? Filiano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Second action is approved to recommend to the board of supervisors a zone change, PZ eleven dash zero zero one, and attach the negative, excuse me, attach the resolution and findings. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I second that.
Roll call?
Long?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Filiano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move to six B. This is a continued public hearing. Setbacks variance, PSV thirteen dash zero zero one, Joe, say the last name for me.
Placentia.
Placentia. And this is a setback variance located in Terabella, approximately three hundred fifty feet north of Terabella Avenue, Avenue ninety-six in Pixley. And it's to approve a setbacks variance. And our staff person is Charlotte.
Thank you very much, sir. The setback variance is to allow a front porch addition to encroach five feet into the building line setback area, which is fifty feet from the center line of Walnut Street. The subject property is located on the west side of Walnut Street, approximately three hundred fifty feet north of Avenue ninety-six, Terabella Avenue in Pixley. This item was first heard by your commission on August twenty-eighth. At that public hearing, staff presented a summary report and recommended denial based on lack of evidence to support the required findings for approval. Upon discussion by your commission, a motion was made to forward the project back to staff with a direction to research the issue further and, if possible, based on additional research, prepare findings for approval of said variance. Based on commission direction and further investigation, staff offers the following analysis for reconsideration of the required findings for approval. There are four findings of consideration of any variance application. The first one is that there be, are special circumstances applicable to the property involved, including shape, size, topography, et cetera, that may restrict the application of the zoning ordinance, deprives, where the application of the zoning ordinance deprives the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and other identical zoning classifications. Number two is that the granting of the variance will be subject to such conditions as will assure that the adjustment thereby authorized shall not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which the property is located. Number three, that the variance will not authorize a use or activity which is not expressly authorized by the zone regulations governing the property, parcel of property, excuse me. The grant, and then number four is that the variance, the granting of the variance is consistent with the general plan. Staff has done the research, and although there are no special circumstances applicable to the property, such as topography, size, shape, location of surroundings, or other features that would necessitate the reduced setback of the front porch, there is development within the same neighborhood whereby the building line setbacks measure from forty-seven feet to fifty feet. Therefore, allowing a setback of forty-five feet would not be a grant of special privilege as other properties in the area and in the same neighborhood and under the same zoning designation were developed with a reduced setback area. Further, in accordance with section sixteen of the zoning ordinance and section seven one nine, one two two zero, the ordinance code, applications for variances may be filed and considered by the decision-making body on a case-by-case basis. In this case, the planning commission may grant upon such conditions and safeguards as it may determine such variances to the provisions of the ordinance as may be in harmony with its general purpose and intent, so that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice be done. In this case, in this particular case, development of the front porch within the building line setback area was not an intentional violation or of the ordinance code by the applicant. The applicant, Mr. Placentia, was unaware of the required setback. Removal of five feet of the porch would be a financial hardship on the applicant as well as a reduction in the aesthetic qualities of the structure. Based upon these circumstances and analysis as stated above, staff supports approval of the variance request to allow the structure to remain within the five-feet building line setback area. A violation is pending, the determination of your commission. Should the project be approved, the applicant will be required to apply for appropriate building permits, pay the appropriate fees, and pass building recommendations or inspections. Staff's recommendation is that you approve the setback variance to allow the front porch addition to encroach five feet into the building line setback of Walnut Street, so that property located on the west side, on property located on the west side of Walnut Street in Pixley. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Charlotte. This is a continued public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to go forward and testify on this project? Anyone against? But, yes, sir. I think we're pretty much convinced we're gonna do this, so...
My name is Jose Placentia. My address, nine twenty-one, South Walnut in Pixley, California. Necesito que alguien me interprete porque casi no entiendo.
Okay, stunning. He's asking for somebody to interpret for him.
Yes.
Here's the que tengo que decir.
He wants to know what he has to say, and...
Would you just tell him that the staff has recommended that we give you the variance to do this, and you can meet with her afterwards? You will have to get a building permit, because the porch was built without the building permit, but we're, it appears, we haven't voted on it, that the staff is recommending that we, we're not gonna require you to tear it down. And you'll know that, you'll know that in just a couple of minutes, but you'll have to get a building permit, because you built the porch, it appears, without a permit, and I know that's not like a major stumbling block, so...
Todo ya no hacen el voto, pero ahorita que si pasa, entonces usted va a tener que agarrar un permiso de construcción ahí donde está nuestra oficina pasa, pero ahorita están recomiendo que dejen su porche como está. Porque yo voy a pagarlo de un permiso especial, he pagado todas las multas y todo. Aquí tengo los recibos de todo lo que he pagado para ver si lo puedo dejar ahí. Eso es ahorita lo que van a decidir. Si permita que hacen su voto, entonces ahorita sabemos. Okay, entonces tengo que esperar un rato aquí. Okay, gracias, gracias.
He was just letting me know that he's already paid some special use permit fees, and...
But he'll need to get a building permit fee.
Si pasa, sí, si va a tener que agarrar un, ya le dije un permiso de construcción para... Okay.
Okay, yeah, he understood.
Thank you.
I think he's confused, that he paid for a variance. Is that correct?
Right.
Not a special use permit? Okay, anyone else like to come forward and testify for or against? If not, I'll close the public testimony. Move to the commission for a vote to approve this setback variance, PSP thirteen dash zero zero one, to allow front porch, front porch addition?
One comment. I had, in the previous meeting, just made a comment about the widening of the road and whatnot, but upon examination of the photo, I can see that the power lines are on this side of the road here, and chances are, if there has to be a widening, they're not gonna move those power lines over. They're gonna take most of it off the other side of the street, so I'm okay with it.
Yeah, if there's no other comments, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second, please?
Second.
A motion. Yeah, roll call?
Long?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Filiano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
So, we have given you the variance, which you paid for. Can you tell him that, please, Philma?
Y ese permiso que había, que había pagado antes. El permiso que dice usted que había pagado antes. Okay, ese ya lo pago, verdad? Ahora ellos aprobaron su, su porche, so ahora va a tener que regresar a la oficina y sacar un permiso de construcción para, para que esté todo ilegal. Allá por la... Sí, allá donde están nuestras oficinas. Como cuánto tiempo tengo para sacar ese permiso, tengo que hacerlo ahora. Lo más pronto posible es mejor. He's asking how long does he have to submit the building permit?
I can't answer that, but soon.
Yeah, I told him this better.
As soon as you can get there, in the next week.
That's what I told him.
Okay.
The better.
Okay.
Lo más pronto que pueda meter ese permiso. Sí.
Thank you.
Ya está? Ya está. Gracias.
Okay, we'll go to item D. Six D, special use permit PSP thirteen dash zero two zero.
Mr. Chairman, C.
C, okay, well, I'm trying to get ahead of myself again, okay. Okay, we're gonna go to C. Tentative parcel map, PPM thirteen dash zero two five, Cassidy family, Forster, Weber's a representative, and it's approved a tentative negative declaration pursuant to the different codes. And this project is near Venice Hill, west of Road one eighty-eight, approximately two miles east of the community of Ivanhoe. This is a continued public hearing from September twenty-fifth, and Chuck, you're our staff person.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Chuck Przybalski, Countywide Planning Division. As mentioned, today is a continued public hearing for parcel map, PPM thirteen oh twenty Herman and Virginia Cassidy. Just a brief overview, this is a subdivision of forty acres into two parcels of nineteen point eight eight acres. There was a zone change that was associated, that was presented before your commission and the board of supervisors, and was approved by the board on September twenty-fourth, from AE eighty, eighty-acre minimum, to AE twenty. The project proponent will continue farming operations, and as mentioned, it's located about a quarter mile west of one eighty-eight. This just kinda gives you a aerial photo of the area. At the time of this photo, the site was in agricultural operations. The applicant will continue farming operations on the actual site.
So, Chuck, now that we've had a zone change on this thing, this is just an allowed subdivision, is it not?
That's correct. And because of the continued public hearing, that's why I'm actually doing a presentation today, instead of the normal parcel map consent calendar.
I see, okay.
So, I'll make this really brief, since it's very familiar for you guys. This is the actual tentative map. The actual division goes from east to west, following a, an actual road. This is gonna be an easement down in the southern area to the northern parcel, and this is an actual road and goalie, so that it's kinda dividing along that line. The recommendation today is to approve the indemnity to the negative declaration for the parcel map and to actually approve the project, PPM thirteen oh twenty-five. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Thank you. This is a continued public hearing. Is there anyone like to come forward to testify for or against this project? Our task has been laid out fairly clear. I'll close the public hearing. Move to the planning commission for comments or a motion to approve.
Well, if there's no further comments, I'll make a motion that we approve. We better get this out here. Where are we? The tentative parcel map, PPM thirteen dash zero two five, and that it conforms with SEQA.
Yeah, it's a conditionally approval, right?
I think so. Am I making both the motions on the same?
Yes, it's just one motion.
Oh, okay. And then...
Conditionally approved tentative parcel map, PPM thirteen dash zero two five.
And conditionally approved parcel map, PPM thirteen dash zero two five.
Do you have a second, please?
Let's second that.
Roll call?
Long?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Filiano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Now, we're gonna go to six D. Special use permit number PSP thirteen dash zero two zero. This is Dave's drafting services. Cataclysm exemption, consistent with SEQA, for a... Mandatory conditional approved special use permit for an agricultural chemicals and fertilizer manufacturing facility to increase operating hours from hours to twenty-four hours per day, and increase the number of employees from twenty-one to twenty-nine on a five-point-two-seven parcel of land in an AE forty zone. This is north of Avenue three, three fifty-two, thousand feet west of Avenue, I mean, excuse me, Highway sixty-three, five miles north of Visalia. And this will be done with one motion, and Charlotte, you're our staff person. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. The item before you today is a use permit submitted by Redission Life Sciences, and I'm hoping I pronounced that correctly. This amendment, if approved, will increase the operating hours to twenty-four hours per day, Monday through Friday, and increase the number of employees from twenty-one to twenty-nine. Your commission first heard this item on August twenty-fifth. A brief summary was made in regard to the information received from Caltrans, and a request from staff was made to continue the item to this date in order to allow staff sufficient time to address those comments from Caltrans. As a result, two conditions of approval have been incorporated into the project. Mr. Spata will... Mr. Spada will elaborate on those conditions later in the letter from Caltrans, but first I'll continue with the summary of the report. A categorical exemption has been prepared for this project. Staff determined that the amendment to the previous, uh, approved use permit would result in no changes in the existing environment and will not result in the expansion of the footprint of the existing use. Also, that there are, there's no possibility that the, uh, proposed activity, which is an increase in hours and also, uh, increase of employees, may cause a significant environmental effect. Staff found no substantial evidence that there are unusual circumstances, including future activities resulting in or, uh, might reasonably result in, uh, significant impacts. The AE forty zone allows these types of agricultural, uh, facilities. Specifically, this zone allows the manufacturing, storage, and handling of agriculture chemicals and the li, and liquid fertilizer manufacturing subject to use permit approval. The existing facility and the proposed expansion is in compliance with all of the general plan and zoning ordinance requirements. The subject site is located on the north side of Avenue three fifth five two, approximately one thousand feet west of State Route sixty-three, five miles north of Visalia. As you can see, this is a graphic depicting the zoning, uh, the site and the surrounding areas are all zoned AE forty, exclusive agriculture, forty acre minimum. This is a, uh, aerial shot of the subject site, and you can see that it's predominantly agricultural and agriculture-related activities. Uh, there is a dairy located to the south, on the south side. This is a, the proj, uh, the site plan for the proposal. The proposed expansion consists of the following: an increase of hours, hours of operation and the number of employees. The facility currently employs twenty-one, uh, employees, uh, for one shift of seven AM to five PM, five days a week. The proposal, if approved, will increase the hours of operation to twenty-four hours per day, Monday through Friday, increase the number of employees from twenty-one to twenty-nine. A single work shift would increase to three shifts per day with twenty-one, uh, persons on the day shift and four each on the swing and grave, graveyard shift. An increase of over twenty-five employees also triggers the requirement for a public water system, which will be regulated by the Environmental Health Division. Access to the site is from Avenue three five two, a county maintained road, and sewage disposal provided by existing septic tank bleach line system on site. Um, as I stated earlier, uh, I'll turn over the, uh, presentation to Mr. Spada for a few minutes regarding the Caltrans letter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission. Just very briefly, I wanted to provide some comment inasmuch as, uh, I did draft the language associated with condition number twenty-eight, which is on page seven of your, uh, draft resolution, and it states, "Any off-site improvements requested by Caltrans shall be reasonably feasible and consistent with the nexus test pertaining to development exactions." Essentially, that language accomplishes a number of objectives. It allows the project to move forward, uh, with respect to the developer, so the developer can expand the operation. Secondly, it continues the economic development objective of the county. Thirdly, it responds to Caltrans in that, assuming they do respond after additional information is provided, the language in there comes right out of the state CEQA guidelines, which allows us to independently review whether any off-site improvements are feasible or reasonable. So, uh, this language accomplishes a number of objectives: to move forward, give Caltrans their additional information, assuming they do respond, 'cause they may not, and if they do respond, there are protections in the condition to ensure that the off-site improvements are reasonable and not excessive. That's it.
Okay, thank you. This is a continued public hearing. Is there anyone at this time would like to come forward and comment for or against this project? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to, uh, the staff's recommendation, which is...
Mr. Chair, I have one question for Charlotte. As I recall, when they originally came in, uh, for the conditional use permit to operate this, there was significant, uh, opposition from, uh, some of the residential, uh, owners there on, uh, Highway sixty-three. Has the county, uh, code enforcement or anything had any complaints or, uh, from any of the activity that's gone on here from those...
No, Commissioner Diaz, um, the county has received no, uh, complaints. There are no co, code violations on this property. There was proper notification to, in three hundred feet of other property owners of the site, and we received no, um, correspondence or phone calls in opposition to this project.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and give us your recommendation.
Recommend that you hold the public hearing and that you adopt the categorical exemption and approve special use permit number PSP thirteen zero two zero.
Do I have any additional comments from my fellow planning commissioners? If not, uh, entertain a motion, please.
I just wanted to say one thing, I mean, there is a, um, and I know there's this kind of area that stores, you know, fertilizer materials, been a problem in other states. Is this regulated to such a, um, condition where there's a maximum amount of storage you can go on here of specific chemicals, or how does that work? Is that done by the state or is that done by the county?
Maybe the applicant would like to, uh, address the storage of the chemicals, but there is no precise limitation in the, uh, in the condition.
Well, I just, you know, from what happened in Texas recently, there was no regulation whatsoever on that.
Most of that's reg, regulated by Title twenty-two, and, I mean, you have so many federal codes regarding hazardous material storage, it's, things happen because you have humans in there, but it's all very codified.
So from a fire perspective, we don't, are there any kind of explosion or anything? We have no hazards there?
There's always a worry, but nothing that goes beyond the norm.
Again, this matter, it was circulated for public review, not only to the fire department, but, uh, but to state agencies, in which case there have been no adverse comments. But the commissioner is correct, there are federal and state regulations that govern and require, uh, compliance with, uh, hazardous waste and hazardous materials and chemicals and so forth, and there have been no problems previously with regard to this.
And excuse me, there is, uh, number thirty-nine. The applicant shall ensure that liquid fertilizer storage complies with Article eighty of the Uniform Fire Code, so I'm assuming that's what that...
What article is it?
And actually, that's wrong, 'cause it's California Fire Code, but go ahead.
I, I think I'm okay, and, uh, so if someone would like a motion to accept staff's recommendation?
I would move to approve.
My second thought.
Roll call.
Song?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Liliano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
We approved it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to item E, special use permit PSP one three dash zero three four, Verizon Wireless, on care of Rebecca Anderson for SAC Wireless. And this is to, uh, permit a new wireless facility on a twenty-five-hundred square foot leased area, nineteen point three eight acres. And, uh, Charlotte is our staff person, and we've heard this before, this is a continued public hearing, it's not Charlotte, sorry.
Ann Chapman.
It's Ann Chapman.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Ann Chapman, a planner with RMA Planning Department, and this is a continued public hearing for PSP thirteen oh three four, uh, cell tower application by Verizon Wireless. The applicant, Verizon Wireless Agent Rebecca Anderson. This will be a one-hundred-foot cell tower designed as a monopole in Orosee, which will provide service along Highway sixty-three. This shows the vicinity, the, how the site is located relative to Orose. Here's an aerial, and we will get back to this in a minute because there's an alternative site proposed too, but here is the owner's site. It's owned by Charles Carlson, and the cell tower will go about here. We do have neighbors here and here who will have some comments today. The second site is also owned by Mr. Carlson, and we will also probably hear from the neighbors a proposal that we move from this site down here. So more on that in a minute. The site is zoned AE twenty, as are most of the surrounding sites. Here is a site plan, this is a twenty-five-hundred square foot area, that's the leased area. There is existing power, there is an existing access road, this is currently a citrus orchard. The project will be in this area, it will require removal of only ten these. I'm gonna move past this one, as I mentioned, this, the tower will be designed as a monopole, so it'll look pretty much like this instead of one of the wider tripod-type poles. Verizon was concerned about aesthetics when they chose this site and they designed it, and this shows views to the site from a couple of points. They've done, uh, photo simulations of what the tower would look like from Road one fourteen. So, this is exist, the existing view, and this would be the tower, what it would look like after the tower from the first site. This is the existing view, and this is what it would look like at the second site. At the September twenty-fifth public hearing, two neighbors spoke with concerns about the project, these were Randall Vay and Clifford Roland. After the meeting, RMA staff decided to hold a meeting with the two landowners, I mean, with the two neighbors, also landowner Charles Carlson and Verizon Agent Rebecca Anderson. With RMA staff, Hector Guerra, our environmental, uh, chief planner, and Charlotte Brusuelos and I also attended. At the meeting, the neighbors discussed particularly noise, aesthetics, lighting, uh, site maintenance and health concerns, with noise and aesthetics being the two main ones. Mr. Vay, at the public hearing, had proposed an alternate location, and Mr. Roland also preferred that location. If I can go back for a minute, I'll just show you on this map, this is where the Verizon proposed site is, and the two landowners who live here and here would prefer that the site be moved down to this location. And this is also owned by, uh, the, the landowner, Mr. Carlson, and he would have no objection.
Ann, who owns the property in the lower left?
The lower left is a neighbor, this is, I believe his last name is Alvarez, you mean, this, if it moved to the location, essentially you would need a whole new noticing because this gentleman was not notified, he was, wasn't within the three-hundred-foot area, so he didn't get notice about this project. In addition, there are some, we'll see on another aerial in a minute, but there are several neighbors down here that are within fifteen-hundred feet of the site, so you'd be...
They weren't involved in that?
No, so you would have a whole new set of neighbors involved. Since we had the meeting with neighbors, one of the concerns was noise, and Verizon has paid for a noise study. They evaluated the cell tower location, uh, and Mr. Roland's house and found that the level would be below the county threshold. The noise levels, it, it's hard with these decibels, but background noise is around forty decibels. Wait, let me go, uh, and the level of the air conditioning unit, even if it ran constantly, which it won't be doing, uh, to Mr. Roland's house would be around forty-seven point five, the county threshold is sixty, so it's be, below the threshold. Our recommendation is that the planning commission hold a public hearing, accept the CEQA categorical exemption, class three, and approve special use permit PSP thirteen oh three four, subject to findings. Would also like to mention one of the, you have a, a draft version of the resolution, and condition eighteen was a condition by, uh, the fire marshal that they add a two-thousand gallon water tank, and Al Miller has since said that that's not going to be a requirement for this, so the final resolution will not have that requirement as one of the conditions. And that's all I have.
So, so the, the, the site is moved to that new location, or it is...
No, 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 the, the Verizon wants it at the current location.
Where it is, okay.
Some of the issues for staff, if we were to move it, uh, we would have to reevaluate everything about the site. It, it's at a new site, and we would have to do a new environmental analysis, we would have to notify a new set of neighbors, Verizon would need to do all new studies, and it's not as, what, in, if you compare just briefly, the site that they chose has existing power and access, and the second site does not.
So the, the, the two neighbors that were at the meeting, what was the conclusion on their part to, to the decision?
They would, they are here today and they will probably, uh, talk more, they would still like the alternative site if they can get it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just follow, first of all, excellent report in delineating the issues and, and the explanation, but if I may say, the analysis that was provided by staff since the last continuance, uh, appears conclusive that there is no adverse environmental impact. Secondly, in order to bring about an accommodation, as between the applicant and the, um, and the property owners, the adjacent property owners, condition number thirty-two, on page eight, is, uh, a reasonable attempt at that accommodation in the sense that, and it addresses aesthetics. The tower design shall be modified as a faux tree if the neighbors request it. In other words, if they don't request that there be a change in the aesthetic design, the, the applicant's design is fine, but this is meant to deal with the, or address the aesthetics issue, but the other environmental issues have been addressed based on reason for the satisfaction of staff that there will be no adverse significant impact from the installation of this project or this facility as requested by the applicant.
So the neighbors, when we come for testimony, they, they understand that those towers that look like trees look pretty cool, actually, so, uh, that's a possibility. Okay, does that, does that cover your report?
Yes.
And then I'll open up the, uh, this is a continued public hearing. At this time, uh, those who are for the project, we're inviting you to come forward and speak, and we'll give you an opportunity at the end to, uh, come back again if you'd like, give your name and, uh, address for the record at the microphone.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Anderson, representing Verizon Wireless. Uh, good morning, Chair and Commission members. As you know, Verizon Wireless is proposing a new wireless facility for the, um, area east of Orosee to also include, um, covering the town of Orosee. It's a one-hundred-foot monopole we're proposing, and a monopole is chosen, um, rather than like a traditional three-legged lattice tower in order to minimize the visual impacts of the area. As you saw already with the photo simulation shown, um, it is just a cylindrical shape, shown in the distance, uh, meant to simulate, uh, other utility poles. This site is desperately needed in this area to fix the poor coverage and service that we have along the major commute route in and out of Orosee, Highway sixty-three. It's also meant to provide better indoor coverage to the residents, um, and businesses in this town and surrounding areas. Site is very important to the Verizon Wireless network in the region of Tulare County here, and, um, it's become increasingly important as what, some other cell sites that are nearby have become overloaded with users, and they need this other site to really provide the network that, um, the Verizon customers expect and deserve. Verizon Wireless did research many locations to put this site within this area. First of all, we always look for... First of all, we always look for existing structures to put our antennas on in order to not have to build a new tower. In this area, the two closest structures that we found were a water tower located approximately 2.25 miles north. And also another lattice tower located in the town of Orosee. It's 1.4 miles east. However, those locations were evaluated by the RF engineer and were determined that they would not be feasible for this site to actually provide the appropriate level of coverage that we need. We also met with several other property owners during the initial research phase and had quite a lot of interest at that time for where we would want to put this site, a new tower. Ultimately, this location was chosen based on distances from existing residences. I was looking for the location that would be furthest away from everyone. Also, it's set back from the road purposefully in order to be as far away as possible. We also did consider the height of the site. 100 feet is necessary to really close the gap in this area. We did provide coverage maps. And did you show those?
Yes, I can bring those. I didn't show them, but I've got them here.
Thanks. Just real quick, it's a really great representation of why the site is needed and what this particular site, at this height, will do regarding coverage to the area.
I may not, I'm afraid I didn't bring those.
Oh, okay. Maybe they're in your packet. I thought that would be available to you. So I apologize. But that was presented in the application. And so we do clearly have a need. And this site fulfills that need. She did already go over the noise study. Our noise levels are very minimal and definitely comply with your county code. Regarding the, in conclusion, regarding the tree design that was just brought up, Verizon Wireless is, we do tree sites sometimes, whenever it seems like that's what the jurisdiction prefers. And so if that is the direction that you want to go here, that's something we can look into. However, I do not recommend it. And just in this area, it seems like it would stand out more than the cylindrical monopole that we are proposing. I feel like I had one more thing, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
I have one question for you. So it's a Verizon cell tower, but do other, do you guys share with other cell companies or is exclusively Verizon?
It's not exclusive. We, I mean, we can share. At this time, it's Verizon building it and proposing it. And if another cell company were to come along and need a site in that area, then obviously they would approach Verizon and what we call co-locate. And that would be definitely available to them. We do those types of agreements all the time. But it would be upon the other carrier to come and make that an option for themselves.
Any other questions from my fellow commissioners? Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, one more, this is the other thing, just regarding that alternate location to the south. Verizon Wireless does prefer to remain in its current location that it's proposed for multiple reasons, such as the due diligence that we've put a lot of effort into the site already. But also, we do feel it is the best location regarding furthest away from residences. If we moved south, it's similarly located closer to other residences that are to the south.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll be given opportunity to come back if you like, okay?
Thank you.
So does anyone here like to give further testimony for or against? Or maybe you don't feel like you're against it, but you just want to tell us something to maybe make it better?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Randy Vay. I live at 42274, Road 114. I spoke a couple of weeks ago. I live and farm directly on the north side of the parcel that's proposed for the cell tower. I'd like to start by saying, I, we, I may slip into we at times. Mr. Rowland's here also, so we have similar feelings. But we, or I, are not opposed to the project, as we've stated in the past, in the meeting we had this past week. And I would like to say, I'd like to thank Ann for setting up the meeting that we had this last week, and Charlotte and Hector being there. But we're not opposed to it. What we really are strongly for is the alternate site. And there's various reasons that I feel that make the alternative site more appropriate than the one that's been proposed, which I'll go ahead and speak to. Number one, which, and I hear the testing on the, and let me back up a second before I get into that. My residence is 650 feet away from the proposed site. Mr. Rowland's is 700 feet, according to the documents that were given. And then to the southwest, that residence there is more or less, what I can tell, about 1,500 feet. So my proposal is to try to make it as equidistant as possible by moving the cell site, let's say 400 feet or so, 400, 500 feet to the south, I think gets it just about as equidistant as possible between the three residences. By no means am I saying that we want to move it closer, much closer to any residence, including the one in the southwest. Our feeling is equidistant is best. And staying on that same parcel, coming down about 400, 500 feet would make that happen. I think that's the fairest compromise for all. Again, and now to get into the reasons. Like I say, I heard the testing on the noise. And that all may be well and true, but I do know that an additional 400 to 500 feet away is also going to help for noise abatement. That's not a bad thing. That's a good thing. A second item, which has been spoken to here, which I spoke to at the last time, is aesthetics, visual aesthetics. And I'll just repeat what I said a little bit two weeks ago. When I bought the property 25 years ago, planted the ranch, built the home, raised my family there, we wanted to name it Sierra Vista, View of the Sierras. But I have a friend that had a ranch that was already named that. So we named it Rancho Vista, Ranch with a View. To us, that's very, very important to have a beautiful view, not just of the sunset, but of the Sierras. Very important. I know Mr. Rowland has a view both ways. The cell tower would be pretty close to right in his way of the setting sun, which we've spoken to. So visual aesthetics are very important. I know there were some computer renderings here that were shown at the meeting last The Verizon representative asked if some more pictures could be taken. And Mr. Rowland said, yes, for computer renderings. And I spoke up and said, yes, would you like to come to my house too and take some pictures there? And take some pictures on my second-story balcony? When we built the home, we built two stories, a balcony on the backside, on the east side, to be able to have a view of the Sierras. So I offered, would you come to my balcony and take some pictures of that for the aesthetics? I will say, I did not get a response. So to me, that's very important, very telling. So aesthetics and visuals are important. Number three, which frankly, I hadn't thought of until two weeks ago, and I think it was Mr. Elliott that brought it up, was possible health concerns. Subsequent to that meeting, I did a little checking online. Not a lot, but I do know what I saw. And I don't think what can be proved or what cannot be proved, but there's a plethora of information, conflicting information out there that speaks to both ways. Again, proven or not, I still think it's very important and critical to at least that extra 400 to 500 feet to get that cell tower equidistant as far away from all three properties and residences. I think that in and of itself should be enough to go for the alternative property or the alternative site. I think that's important also, now that it was brought up to my attention. And then fourth, for me, access of entry is important, too. By moving the site from the north border to the southern area of that property would allow the access of entry to go into both parcels owned by the same owner, Mr. Carlson. So there's no adjoining neighbors. A concern is the property line on the north side. If it stays with the north proposal, I'm afraid there's not enough room. I know that Verizon is going for a 12-foot access. Well, if you take from the property line to the trunk of the tree of Mr. Carlson's and take that 12-foot for access, and knowing that they're not going to be able to go north of that property line, he could have to have to chop off maybe five to six foot of his trees down that row. I don't think that's a good thing either. By moving it down to that position, access problems go away. I think that's another huge dynamic that I feel very strongly about. And then one other thing that was also spoken to was considerations of significant amount of time and expenditures that are put into the project to get it to this point, that that's a reason to put it in that spot. Well, personally, I don't think that holds water. Up until about two or three weeks ago, we didn't know a thing about this project. We've never had any input into it until two, three weeks ago. It would have been just as easy for the parties that are bringing this to have spoken to us whenever it was started and just talk, hey, communicate, and what do you think? But, so we never, I don't think it's fair to us to say, hey, it's got to go here because time and money's been spent on it when we weren't even involved in the project up until a couple of weeks ago, when we had to be brought into it. So those are, I think, a bunch of reasons that I feel the alternative site is good and proper for everything. And then just one final thing that personally, it's a little bit discouraging that, like I say, I've been out there 25 years, farming, living, raising my family. I'm a short timer. Mr. Rowland's been out there 51 years. So we're willing, we have the spirit, we want to compromise. We're not against it, but let's put it there. But it's, like I say, for me personally, a little discouraging that the Verizon Company comes in and is saying, well, there's this alternative, but we're going for this site. And we're the ones that live there, work there every day. So those are the reasons I hope you will consider the alternative. And I appreciate you taking the time for me to share my concerns and thoughts. Yes, sir?
Sir, is your property to the east of that proposed tower?
I'm the 40 acres north. Mr. Rowland is to the east.
You're right there.
I'm right, yes, sir. Right.
And then Mr. Rowland is here.
Yeah.
Are those all orange groves?
Citrus.
Citrus. But there are all orange groves around you there?
That's oranges, yes.
How big are those trees? How tall are they?
We top them at about 11 foot. 10 to 11 foot. I do have a block, this is an older, an older map, north of my house, which could happen also south of my house. I have grafted that and topped, worked that a year and a half ago. So the trees are about like this. Could happen on the south, which is going to even, again, extend the-
But they're about 11 or 12 feet?
Yeah. We top them every year, about, yeah, 11 foot.
Just some observations then. Regardless of where you put the tower, it's going to be invisible in terms of the lower part of that operation, the structure at the bottom?
No, I, oh, the top, I see.
You can see the top, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Can't see the bottom?
No, I won't be able to see the bottom, correct.
So that means there's some amount of noise buffering if there were, you know, any kind of a noise element being dispatched out of that location at the bottom?
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
So there was some insulation there?
I agree totally, yeah.
So maybe it isn't so bad in terms of what you're looking at. The aesthetics, if you were looking from your home, you wouldn't see much of it until you looked over the 12 feet or 11 feet of a tree, right?
No, it's always there. It's there.
Right. But it's a, it's a kind of a narrow tower. It's not a big-
About 100 foot high.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward and testify? Please give your name and address for the record, please. And point on the map. I think we know where you live, but just point again, okay?
Cliff Rowland, 42199, Road 120. And Randy really has taken my steam from me, all those points I was going to bring up. But, you know, just the-
And you're the house that's just, that's exactly west of the, or east of the site?
Yeah, east of the site.
Right there.
Right there. Now, those trees that you see there, they're gone now. They've been gone for eight or nine years.
Okay.
I farm about 100, I'm involved farming about 170 acres all east of that property. Vegetables and vines and citrus. And as I said last weekend, I was here aesthetically. I walk out early in the morning, I do my, I do, I do. But I'm worried about the noise thing. As quiet as it is, I can put up with sprayers in the background, I can work, I can handle wind machines in the morning, but I don't want to hear a, I was told like a pool motor running. I was told that's about the level of noise. I don't agree with that. But anyway, that's, but mainly, it's the tall and the stacked value, the view I'm going to have. That's what I'm really concerned about. And I'll see that from all over my ranch, besides just my walks. I can go on on that, but that's my main concern. I don't want to get emotional about this thing, but Randy did say everything I was going to say. But we had a good talk, and the environmental expert, Mr. Guerra, there was telling that there's no environmental impact. I've talked to my kids, my daughter and son-in-law live just north of my home there. They built a home there about 16 years ago. And you know, I was just telling them how discouraged I am about having these things come in. You know, I'm only one man. Randy's two here. I'm only one man. I live in the middle of a section. I'm protective. I've got a chip on my shoulder when it comes to farmers, really. You know, I just kind of please what I do and think we're doing something. And last night at supper, the kids were visiting about this thing, and they said, Dad, you know, you remind me about that Paul Harvey thing on the Super Bowl, whatever it was. I said, what's that? And they pulled it up. And here's this soliloquy by Harvey about a farmer. And you know, I feel like I'm the endangered species. I don't have enough power. Back, okay, really upset. Randy Vay is a good example of that soliloquy. He's been on the school board at Munson-Sultana for too many years. And I've been told that's one of the finest school districts in Tulare County. But there's an example of a farmer, you know, paying some dues. I'm not going to tell you what I do within my industry and their politics and such as that, but I think we all pay our dues. I don't like to be encroached upon by something I have no control of in a commercial event, a commercial venture. And, won't talk in too much, but I've taken the effort to learn how this unit operates. I'd like to have you all move back to Washington DC here next week, it would help us out a lot. But I do appreciate the effort the staff goes through to inform you to make the decision because you rely on them to make these decisions. And what they decide on, that's good enough for me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll ask the applicant to come forward if she'd like to make any additional comments, please. Got to give your name and address again, I'm sorry, but-
Rebecca Anderson, representing Verizon Wireless from West Sacramento.
Put your address in Sacramento.
P.O. Box 2088.
Thank you.
Verizon Wireless, as we mentioned before, did go to a lot of effort to research this location for this site. And obviously, the need is great in this area. It would require a great deal of effort to move the site from, we've done a lot of already environmental and soil testing. This would obviously require new architectural drawings, other amendments to documents. These all add up to quite a large expense. Obviously, you know, people will say we're a large company, but costs are costs. And it is a big deal to move it at this point. Number two, as I mentioned previously, the current- Number two, as I mentioned previously, the current site is located equidistant from homes. The alternate site would just be moving the site closer to other homes. Just thought it might be interesting to note that the, just the neighbor that was just here, his kid's property to the north, they were actually very interested in having the site on their property. They were one of the backups. Basically, Verizon Wireless does just respectfully request your approval today. Please let me know if there's any other questions.
I have a couple of questions. It seems that the, those who are opposed are not opposed to that site, that they just want to move the tower more into the orchard. So, I guess I'm going to ask the staff the same question, if they move it a little more south and a little bit more east, will we have to have another hearing as long as we keep it? So it doesn't, one of those other houses, I mean, would it work if it was more west and more south? Maybe 100 feet one way and 100 feet another?
Well, from my perspective, actually, right now, we are located right along the access road, and so we only are proposing to remove 10 trees for the site itself. If you were talking about just moving it more into the middle of the orchard, that does require a lot more removal of trees, a lot more disturbance of the ground to create, you know, more of a road there. We do have power located nearby that would increase the power run for what you're proposing. If it's moved all the way down to the bottom of the property, which is what they're proposing, then we are still along the roadway. We are far from power in that instance. We do have to bring power from a lot further, so that obviously is a huge deal. But I would say further into the orchard is even less ideal. I mean, moving it in general will require work, so we wouldn't want to propose to move it into the middle of the orchard to disturb more trees, personally.
Okay, I think you kind of answered it, okay? Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions? I kind of cut you off.
No.
I've got a quick comment when Mr. Rollins done.
Also doing business, having to redo this evaluation for another spot. Maybe they put the cart before the horse, and they didn't investigate far enough around to do this one here. But when you tell me about having spent this money before coming this far, how much do you think a farmer spent before he picks a tomato or a cucumber or a vine or a whatever? That's a weak argument with me. We put that money in the ground, as you know.
I agree with you.
Okay, there you are.
Thank you. Only if it's new.
I just want to respond to the location, again...
Go ahead, give your name and address for the record, please.
Randy Vay, 42274, Road 114. I just want to respond to, is it equidistant between the two closest houses? Yes, Mr. Rollins and I, 650 and 700 feet. It's not equidistant to the house on the southwest. Like I say, that's closer to 1,500. It could be equidistant to all three, being further south, close to that South Avenue. Maybe it would be about 1,100 feet for all of us. That makes sense. I just want to clarify that.
I asked that question, so, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the testimony at this time and move to, I'd like to hear the staff's recommendation, then we'll talk about it, okay?
Before the recommendation, if I could just make a brief comment, we'll certainly provide the recommendation.
You're part of that staff, so...
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, first, I do want to acknowledge and thank the comments of the speakers today, the adjacent property owners, because they have taken their time to provide their concerns, which staff has taken very seriously and in good faith evaluated. And evaluated not only independently, but within the context of reaching out and trying to have a forum in which all parties can sit at the table so that their views can be heard, and we could reach a reasonable accommodation. It appears that there are advantages and disadvantages to keeping the facility where it's proposed and moving it. This calls out what is probably your most important obligation, and that is when you have a land use and an environmental decision to make, you have to make one that is reasonably balanced, after you consider all the facts and circumstances. Staff has done so in good faith, and after further analysis, the staff recommendation will be to continue to support the facility at its present location. Although we recognize that there's an alternative argument that can be made for moving it, one of the chief concerns is that if we move it, it may reopen the process, and you will hear the same types of objections from other property owners, and we have not accomplished anything. You have to acknowledge that telecommunications is an important objective in societal progress at this time. It's being introduced in an area where traditionally, the agricultural use has been able to flourish. What we've tried to do through the condition of approval is at least mitigate that concern whereby it could be developed or constructed in a way that it is in keeping with the ornamental aspect of the neighborhood. It's a close call, if you will, but staff is willing to recommend going forward as proposed by the applicant today. But we do want to acknowledge and respect the concerns that have been expressed by the adjacent property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Spot. I'm going to do something a little different, and I think we know what the staff's position. I'm going to start with Nancy, and I'd like to hear everybody's comment as to how you feel about this.
I do appreciate everyone's work in this and trying to make this happen. Being a farmer, I'm a little thrown off why this always has to be an ag land, that that is the zoning and that is the way it's zoned. I would probably say to myself, no, I don't want that there. The same thing is exactly what these property owners are saying. But ag land is zoned for these towers, and if we follow our zoning ordinances, it should be approved.
Phil?
I don't have any, I don't know, I can't go either way on this, but, you know, I kind of sympathize with the people in Oroce, because that's where I'm from. And that's, and I was thinking what Mike was thinking, if we moved to the new site, we're going to still, we may still have the same problem. But then there's the argument that there was an equal distribution between the neighbors in terms of the distance from the tower, but it seems like our main premise here in the board is if there's something that is, I guess, that's illegal or doesn't fit the law or our requirements, that we don't, you know, that we need to, you know, go with what's on the books.
Rod?
You mean John?
John. I know a Rod. If you want to change your name to Rod, it's easier for me to remember John.
I find this process a little bit ironic in that, it's kind of like, you know, I'm from three rivers, and we deal with the national park all the time, and I hear this all the time from the park. We have studies on the noise, we have studies on the impacts of environment, we have no studies on how this affects people and human beings. This is exactly the science we get from the park. So, I think, in this case, we're kind of, you know, we're pointing to, yeah, we want telecommunications, it's important for progress, yet we don't even know what progress is doing to us. So, my suggestion in this is, we don't necessarily have to move this, but I think we owe it to the people in that area to look at another location. So, that's what I would support.
Your name's Charlie Dorbid, right?
Last I checked. The health issues, yeah, we're not going to know the mutagenic or the tetrogenic effects of this for generations. In my past life, and I'll be brief, in the city of Exeter, we had inflexible, I don't know, lose your competitor or what have you, but based on FCC bandwidth, we have this Monopole downtown Exeter, which is just the epitome of, it's terrible. It's hideous, and I look by there and get ticked every time I walk by it. Land use issue, I understand, you have to meet your requirements, but, you know, it's, we need to try. I think we need to look at the other sites just to make sure, and we may run into the same issues, and this may be back before us, but in essence, we have an outside competitor communication which provides a very important service that's dictating land use in Salari County, so...
Wayne?
I have family members that have one of these kind of towers on their property in the Farmersville area.
Waldens, right?
Yeah. I don't have any emotions one way or the other about it, because it's pretty invisible. That's why I brought up the issue about orchards and groves. The lower half of these things, you don't see them, and in the trees, you don't hear them either. So, I think from an environmental perspective and aesthetically, you know, you see some of it, but environmentally, I don't think there are any negative impacts here. So, I don't see, and then the equidistant issue, because two people are, you know, 600 or 700 feet apart from this, moving it to another location to bring a third homeowner into it to make it equidistant to them, doesn't make sense to me. Because my question then is, what's the outcome of moving it to an equidistant location just to make sure that three people are equidistant versus two? That doesn't satisfy any solution in my mind. So, I think this is a no harm, no foul situation in my book. It is, if it's not in my backyard, I understand that completely. I probably wouldn't like it either, but it's not illegal, it's not that imposing, and I think it will be a non-issue once it's in there.
Thank you. Ed?
Anne? Could you put the aerial up on that?
I'm going to ask you, Gil, too, even though we need a consensus on all eight of us, so...
Put the one with the, had the property outlined around it. Yeah, okay. Now, I'm kind of leaning to an alternate site myself, and I think if we keep it, not more than, say, about 400 feet from where it is, we're still on the same site, same parcel. I don't think we're going to be, that location's going to trigger any additional notification, because we've already notified everybody.
Well, this fellow wasn't notified.
Well, he's more than 300 feet away.
He's more than 300 feet away from the first site, he would be on, you know, if it's on the second parcel.
No, we're not going on that. We're only going to go about, that's about 600 feet for that whole thing there, so 400 feet's going to put about two-thirds of it, right about there. Now, see, that's all they're asking for here. And, you know, we don't know, as John mentioned, we don't really know what the environmental aspects on health are over the long haul. And I'm just saying here that we've got an opportunity here to satisfy the neighbors, make a good neighbor on the thing. I don't think it's going to be that expensive to move it, and I think, I think I'd support an alternate location.
Gil?
That's a tough one. I don't know what it would look like in my backyard. I lean towards what Ed is saying as well. Yeah, it takes out a few more trees, makes it a little more expensive, but I think it would appease everyone. A little more cost, I understand, and in 20 years, that cost is probably nothing. So, I would lean to moving it farther into that site and no notice required.
I have just a short comment on historically how things happen. Talk about how farming can go away. I think my family's been in the farming business longer than before California was a state. We grew the first grapes and cotton where Union Station is in downtown LA, and had wine, received medals for those things. And so, little by little, the family, the Keller family, over the last 150 years, sold that land a little bit for the Union Station, and so a little bit of the farming goes away, and then pretty soon, somebody wants to build a city hall, a little bit more of it goes away, then USC came and bought more. And I don't see this as one of those things, but we, you know, we're talking about moving it to the middle, and then there's a few more agricultural orange trees that go away, and so I'm thinking that we need to do, my story is to do what least affects what is growing there. We don't need to be removing a lot of trees, because it just starts with four trees, and it's 10 trees, and it's 20 trees, and then what happens next? I don't know. So, I don't see the moving that makes, aesthetically, yes, you won't see it, but I'm just against eliminating agricultural, like removing trees, it takes away. So, having said all of that, we'll go to staff's recommendation, and then we'll take a vote, look for a motion.
And just to note, the staff recommendation is also on page two of your special memorandum. And it is to accept the CEQA categorical exemption and approve special use permit number PSP 13-034, subject to findings and conditions. And as stated during the course of this hearing, condition number 32, from staff's perspective, represents an accommodation of the aesthetic interest in the sense that if the property owners do request the faux tree, then the applicant would be required to do so. But staff's recommendation, after considering all the advantages and disadvantages, is to leave the facility as proposed by the applicant.
I'll make that motion, will we adopt categorical exemption, special use permit PSP 13-034, and additionally approve the special use permit PSP 13-034.
Do you have a second, please? No second? So is the motion going to die for a lack of a second?
I'd like to make an alternate motion.
Well, we've got to get rid of the other one first, so, I guess the motion dies because of lack of a second, so I will go for a new motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we at least consider the feasibility of an alternative site. And I really, I don't know how specific we can word this, but I think...
Can we continue it, John, to let them work it out and bring it back?
I think that...
They've already done that.
If I may make a suggestion, it appears since the original motion to approve died for lack of a second, there is an alternative motion, and I don't know if that's been seconded yet. I don't believe so, but if we're going to continue the matter again, I'd say for 30 days, and direct the applicant to provide a feasibility analysis so that you can actually see the costs and benefits of the original location as well as the alternative location, in which case you'll have information on which to make that decision, because you could decide to stick with the original location.
But I think it'd be prudent to present the other information in case we need more documentation and analysis of that site, if that's what we so choose.
As I understand it, then, if a motion were made, it would be for the limited purpose of evaluating the feasibility, the economic feasibility of the alternative location, not to reopen it and discuss other environmental issues and so forth. Let's narrow the focus, because we've really, really beaten this to death now.
Is that what you want to do, John?
I guess, I'd like to take a look at it in 30 days and see what that would entail, but I know in this type of thing, it's sometimes prudent to do it all in one swoop, so, if you want to limit the focus of the motion, I'm okay with that.
That's my request to the commission.
Okay, so I'm making a motion that we continue to 30 days...
November 13.
That we would look at the feasibility and the costs involved of actually relocating the tower site.
That the applicant would evaluate the feasibility and present that information.
Yes. The applicant would evaluate that, yes.
That will give our staff actually the time to evaluate whether we have to renotice this or not, is that correct?
If it's continued to a date certain, we don't have to renotice it. The property owners are here, so they would be given that notice today.
I think what Bill was asking you is if, it would give the staff a chance to evaluate whether we'd have to renotice with an alternate location.
Well, we don't know the answer to the question yet because it may be that based upon the economic analysis provided by the applicant, that it's not desirable to move the location. So, what I would say, let's not prejudge the outcome of the analysis, let's see what it is, and then if it shows that it's not economically and feasible to relocate it, then we could decide to renotice it at that time. Because we don't know what that information is going to disclose.
But we're not denying it, and so do I have a second for that?
Yeah, I'll make a second on John's motion.
Roll call?
Dog?
Yes.
Millies?
No.
Elliot?
Yes.
DS?
Yes.
Winatch?
No.
Ciliano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
So, if...
You just wasted a lot of time.
Give me a second here.
Yep.
Ms. Anderson will get with our staff, Ann Chapman, and we'll see if we can get this worked out in thirty days. Thank you very much for all of you coming to testify, and you know when the next date is, if you have any questions, ask Ann. Okay, we'll move to item seven, planning director's update.
I see the director of the agency here, would he like to address the commission?
Oh, can he?
Oh, he can.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this, this honorable commission.
Thank you.
Just came back from, just left the inclusion of the APA conference that was held here in Visalia.
I did attend some of it myself, yes?
Yes, good. I heard that you were in attendance, and that's very good. From all, listening to everyone talk, it was a very, very successful conference. It's a different kind of venue rather than a large urban setting, and so we brought, intentionally brought the APA conference here to, to the valley, and through the efforts of Fred Brusellis and Ben Kimball, they really convinced the state APA board to provide the opportunity to have this conference here in Visalia. From what I've heard, there's been about seven hundred to eight hundred and fifty attendees that came to this conference from all over the state. So, I also heard a report last night when they, a, a family went downtown, there was a whole bunch of people, planner nerds, running around with their lanyards, having a great time and having dinner in the downtown area of Visalia.
Planner nerds, I like that word.
Planning nerds, yes. So, it was a very, very good conference, and I think Fred will, and will give you an update as to more of the specifics next, your next meeting. Charlotte was part of the planning team as well as a number of other planners within, yeah, within the, the county and the cities, and so it was a, a really a good effort, so I appreciate that and their effort to represent our valley and our Tulare County, so it was, we, we did well, and so...
A little bit different perspective than what we hear coming this weekend, as accounting planning commissioner, we have the more perspective of, you know, more populated, more urban areas, problems that they, that they have.
Yes.
How they handle it, and...
Yeah, the, the issues are all the same, but they're different, and so it gives, does give a better perspective, and so I do appreciate that.
A lot more political pressure groups in the cities, so...
Yes, so, very good, that's all I have to report, thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Spot.
Mr. Raper, as always, it's a privilege. Very briefly today, first of all, I want to thank the staff, and I want to thank Velma and Samantha, Office Administration staff, for your kind words with regard to the minutes. They are taken very seriously, and the fact that you were very pleased with them is a shot in the arm that we appreciate very, very much, so we acknowledge very much your, your compliment in that regard because we do discuss the minutes at our weekly agenda review to ensure that they meet high standards and are in accordance with your expectations, so thank you for that. Also, I wanted to say, well, today was a good working meeting, and I really appreciate all of your effort because these are supposed to be working meetings since they are public hearings involving a diversity of viewpoints. Almost all of the projects were approved today without opposition. We continue to because there were concerns on both sides, and what we'd rather do is rather than ram through projects, make sure that there is robust consideration of all the issues. So, we do appreciate your effort to ensure that the right decision hopefully is made always. In line with that, what I think I would like to do next planning commission meeting is, under the discussion, put on the discussion the general plan update, particularly with regard to the planning framework, because those are all the policies that involve the new obligations, if you will, that the county and affected cities have to go through concerning what should be the future development in areas within urban development boundaries. So, this is new again, this is new, so that we want to make sure that we are abiding by the new obligations in the GPU as well as any affected memorandum of understanding. So, I'll put that on the agenda and walk you through that so that when you see these conditions coming forward based upon discussions with cities, that this is the way we're moving forward in order to ensure that there is proper development in the county and within the areas in which the cities are going to be growing. That's all I have, thank you very much again, and look forward and appreciate serving you in any way that we can.
One more little party comment, just what I'd say, I'm glad to see Clint back, he is very quiet and doesn't say anything, but I really miss Nina, and I'm sorry, but... Anyway, if there's no further comments, meeting adjourned.